Been a long time.
It's been a long time.
They were just asking, just for curiosity, nothing important.
Okay, thanks for coming out tonight, everybody. Uh, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order and start with the pledge.
Let's introduce the pledge of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so to approve the agenda, anything to change or correct? Paul?
Nope, looks good.
Dan?
Nothing.
Ryan?
No.
Okay, hearing none. Entertainer motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Dan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Thank you. Uh, consent agenda, questions, comments, concerns with consent agenda? Entertainer motion to approve?
Make the motion to approve.
Thanks, Ryan. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Paul, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion carries. On to visitors of the council Dodge Center ambulance presentation. Who would like to start?
Good evening, council mayor. Uh, my name's AJ, currently the interim director for the Dodge Center Ambulance. Uh, Leo, city administrator and carry, council member, um, with us. Uh, you guys have seen, I think, in previous packets, um, uh, different numbers and figures and, um, information regarding the ambulance service. Um, and so, with, I guess with that being said, the last like year and a half or so, we've been kinda doing some digging, trying to figure out how are we going to continue to have a local ambulance service in the area. Um, and so with that, um, you know, us ourselves have tried to eliminate costs in a variety of ways. We're currently down one full-time employee, um, and we're trying to maintain that staffing level in an effort to cut some costs. Um, obviously puts more on our volunteers, um, that type of thing. Last year, our volunteers put in over fourteen thousand five hundred hours. Um, and so, uh, we are relying heavily on them. Uh, without them, it would be obviously a lot bigger ask to maintain the service in the area. Um, we, uh, have, your, I guess administrator, um, I don't believe any council members have been at any of the meetings yet that we've done. We've done a few, um, but he, um, yeah, has been at a few, in attended those, um, and hopefully brought some information back to you guys. Uh, biggest issue right now that we're dealing with is reimbursements. You know, we're, we're not getting, uh, hardly paid at all with reimbursements from insurances. Uh, Medicare, Medicaid, those type of, uh, systems tell you what you get. You could bill them five million dollars, they're gonna only give you four hundred dollars. You know, that's kinda the way that works. Um, and we don't get a say in that. And so, for what we bill, we currently get about half of what we bill. Not quite, um, in a year timeframe. And we are pretty, we're actually slightly under, um, market value for charges, um, what we charge for the ambulance service. Um, we hope to increase those, we just increased them, um, based on a study from the state that they did, and in hopes, but really, uh, only ten percent of bills get paid in full, um, that, in a, in a year's timeframe, immediately. Some may get paid in full, but not for years because they get set up on a payment plan or whatever that may be. Um, so there's different ways that happens. Obviously, so reimbursement's our biggest issue, um, and then supplies, everything post-COVID went way up, as we all know. Um, and that just doesn't go for ambulance, that goes for any industry for the most part. Costs have gone way up. Um, I currently search three different suppliers every single time I order supplies to try to find the cheapest one I can that still does the job. So, um, yeah, what did I miss?
Oh, maybe just a couple things. Thank you once again for seeing us today to talk about this issue. Um, it's a common issue across all of, all of the state right now, or the country is an issue. Um, Hayfield right now just come out, and I think their townships just paid a hundred and fifty dollar a household.
Hundred forty.
Hundred.
Or is it one fifty? One fifty?
Somewhere around that per household. Uh, they paid the ambulance for the subsidy. Uh, West Concord right now is gonna be levying a tax, they're looking to hire people. We're actually backstopping West Concord, five days a week, twelve hours a day right now.
Yep.
Um, cause they haven't got the ability to staff. And we try to keep them alive so that we don't end up bearing that burden permanently. Um, St. Charles is going through a restructuring of their ambulance and, and currently, Lewiston is providing their service while they try to get their service back up, and they're looking at a levy. Um, so it's not a real uncommon struggle that we're facing. Um, the solutions we've talked about have been kind of from feedback for the means we've been hosted. And with this point, and Mike's gonna talk about a kind of a joint, a two-pronged approach to the problem of creating a joint powers board and a special taxing district, so that the various jurisdictions would have a choice which way they wanna go. But we've heard from you folks that you really want everything run separately from your levy. You would allow it to be part of that, as the feedback we've gotten, and that would be a special taxing district, where there'd be a separate line on the budget, a separate line on the tax statements. Um, there's some other organizations that have been very, in fact, they wanna see a joint power solution. Um, there is a way to do both, it, it's more complicated, but, um, at this point, we're trying to find a solution that will work for all parties and will allow us to sustain, uh, this service going forward. And we've, to that end, we've been working with Mike Babani, who's done some looks at our books to give kind of an independent evaluation of where we're at, what the needs are, what the struggles are, and Mike can comment to that.
Sure. Um, am I okay to talk here? I don't know if you're...
Yeah, absolutely. Yep, absolutely. You can just talk loud.
Okay, so, there, right, this has been a statewide issue. I've got clients up in northern Minnesota even that are running into the same problem, where, uh, cities are having to, um, throw money at these services to keep them up and running. Um, the two main priorities are, first, just the replacement, cost of replacing vehicles and all the equipment. And that's, you know, ever increasing. Not to mention just the difficulty to staff. Um, the more I've learned about this, actually the more terrified I've become about whether an ambulance is gonna show up when I call or not. Um, they're talking to me about how much training you have to go through just before you can even go on to run and assist. And you're giving up hours every week for month after, month after month after month, and then, and then to be on call where you're tethered to your house for your community, cause you can't go anywhere, cause you gotta be on these calls. Firemen will know all about that. Um, and so, cities all over the state are either raising their on-call pay to keep volunteers happy, or they're hiring career people to be around, you know, full-time. But either way, it's just between the equipment and the personnel. And then on top of all that, we've got, you know, Medicare only reimbursing a small percentage of what the actual costs are. Um, and so that, so that's, that's the problem. So, I was asked to come in and, and look at, you know, what kind of support might this service need to, to stay up and running? Um, my first response, and they had mentioned the special taxing district and/or joint powers, and my first response is I hate both of those ideas. I like the handshake deal where everybody just agrees to throw money in and, and run the service that way. Um, we got some pushback on that because there's no contractual obligation then, uh, of the various communities and what's gonna stop one council from saying no. And, you know, then it just kinda makes it a problem for everybody else. Um, and then, you know, trying to meet the needs and wants of, basically, what is it, four cities and six or seven partial townships, um, it's like herding cats trying to get everybody happy and how this might model out. So first, let me talk about the finances. So, um, AJ was good enough to get me a list of these capital items. Um, and when I show you this support, by the way, the amount of money, it's gonna be a big number. Um, recognize that if we go through with this, there's gonna be, you know, boards or commissions that are gonna actually set the budget. And they might say, well, that's too crazy high. We'll forego this piece of equipment, we'll try and staff it, you know, under current levels, those kinds of things. So don't, don't get bogged down too much in that number being the yes or no answer. It's more conceptually to understand the need for the money, and then the boards that'll have representation of all the organizations can decide exactly what it is. So anyways, uh, just recently, they just bought an ambulance, they've got another one coming in a year or two. Um, I've got this set up so I can cash these out or finance them, and then you see I, I've got these things rolling over into the future. Um, I won't bog it down with the details on all this, but all of this data is being pulled over into my annual cash flow. So I'm gonna go here and I'll zoom this in. So we've got, uh, actual activity from the ambulance fund, um, you know, through two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three is a bit of a projection. I don't have audited financial statements for that yet, of course. Um, and then we're projecting from there. The ambulance fund has been only supported a little bit in taxes, five thousand dollars from CASN and seventy-five hundred dollars from Dodge Center, and that's been it. So we're projecting cash balance here as our beginning, projected cash balance for twenty-four, our revenues, um, our operational expenses, and then less capital, uh, you can't see it, but it's over here. Um, capital outlay and debt service will get paid out of this. And then we get our ending reserve. So I'll just zoom up to the top again. So you can see that our, our balance quickly goes way negative, right? And so, basically, I played with this and said, okay, how much money is necessary to, you know, make this work? I think that's one too many zeros. Okay, so there's a three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar contribution spread across all the taxing jurisdictions. And then you can see as we go out, you know, it looks like we're building cash, but then eventually it starts to, um, go back the other way again, long-term. So we'd have to, you know, annually, you'd have to be reviewing your performance. And also recognize, um, in fact, I think coming up this month, the Southeast League of Municipalities is having a presentation regarding this. And I think they're gonna be pushing hard. So it could be that the state jumps in or the feds jump in at some point and maybe provide some relief to ambulance services, in which case you could back this off, but I'm trying to give you a big number now, um, so that if things get better, you know, I, you know, set an expectation and beat it, is my hope. So, um, if we put in that kind of money and split it, the, you know, just split it a variety of ways, I think the most reasonable way, uh, was per household. Um, and then if you're from a township, of course, that makes sense because why would I help pay farm, you know, ambulance service on my farm, right? The corn doesn't need to have a, you know, clear, you know, that's not gonna happen. So based on that, um, we set this up, at least for now, as a two-part system. We have all of the cities creating a special taxing district. This will be sort of the lead organization. Um, it'd have a board set with members from each city on it that would set the budget and so forth. And then they would contract with the joint powers group, which would, which would be made up of the townships. Um, I shouldn't say the benefit, but the, um, the side effect of doing it this way is that when the cities, uh, when the taxing district does this levy, it won't show up on your, your city, as a city, you don't have to budget for it. When the property tax statement comes out, there's gonna be a different line, you know, you know, where your soil and water and your HRAs and stuff like that, probably gonna be under that line. So it'll be separate from cities, whereas the townships as their joint powers, the joint powers is gonna inform each township what they have to add to their budget, and then it's gonna actually be part of their budget. They won't be part of the separate line. So just based on households, and these aren't exactly accurate because I've got these townships in yellow that are partial townships, and I could only find the total households on, until somebody goes out and counts for me, I wasn't gonna do it, uh, until they go out and count them. But it won't have a huge impact on the, on the resulting numbers. But you can see that, uh, the cities would have the largest impact. So I took a two, a house that's taxed at two hundred thousand value, it's actually worth a little bit more because of market value exclusion, but after that's taken into account, they're taxed at the two hundred thousand, what would be the annual impact? And you can see it's forty-nine bucks. Um, as a comparison, I said, what if we all did a handshake deal and just all agreed to our own levy? And if you built it in, this hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollar levy into your budget, based on your own tax base, that forty-nine dollars comes fifty dollars. You're, you're sort of the largest tax base in the room, and so it's some of these smaller ones. So like I did the same analysis with Manorville, cause Manorville, no, excuse me, Claremont, um, thought they may wanna join the joint powers as opposed to the taxing district, and I showed them how their impact went from like forty-nine bucks to like seventy-eight bucks. So they actually benefit from being, but it has very minimal impact on CASN one way or the other. And it's just a function of, because the bigger the town, the more households you have. Um, if we work this out, um, again, this isn't perfect because we won't have quite this many households. That's a little over, you know, it costs sixty-three bucks a household, and then if we adjust, maybe it pushes up towards seventy, but it's quite a bit less than what Hayfield and some of these other communities are looking at in terms of their tax support. Um, other things that we discussed, and this will be handled by the attorneys if this proceeds, is, um, basically, the way I was thinking it should work was, you know, Dodge Center owns the building, that, the ambulance building, and then they continue to do that, but then allow the, um, taxing district to use it. And the equipment that's already owned right now by Dodge Center, you know, basically that's gonna depreciate, not be worth anything, but the next round of equipment, when that all comes in, is not gonna belong to the city of Dodge Center, it's gonna belong equally to the district, right? Um, and then this district would have a contractor services with the, the joint powers. That's it in a nutshell. Uh, why don't I stop and see where questions take us?
I guess I would just follow up with Mike by saying that we're, we're still going around talking to people, kind of, kind of get feedback on what to do. Um, you know, we don't wanna incur a lot of expense if everybody's dead set against proposals, so we have to figure out what other, other options are available. Um, but we're looking for some feedback after we answer questions on, you know, are we on the right track, are we on the wrong track, or where are we headed?
Questions? So Mike, that, sorry, my eyes don't work with that shade of color, that's just me. Um, so you, so that example you had, so there'd be a first year to get things caught up, and then it's just gonna basically be like the levy process going forward for that committee? Same deadline, September, where the preliminary, final in December, the whole, everything, the ball, okay? So it'd be set year to year based on the projection for the budget?
Yep, and that board, which would have CASN folks on it, and Dodge Center folks, and Manorville folks, and Claremont folks, they would decide.
Got it.
And so, you know, you, if this is created, we're kind of, we're trying to put a rush on this so that we can get something set up by summer, so that the first levy could take place in twenty-five. That's the goal. And if we're successful in that, they may get together and say, no way are we doing three seventy-five. We've gotta find a way to do something else. And that's fine, but at least then we've got a number to work from and we can.
Sure.
Figure out where to cut.
If I may just add, one of the reasons we're really interested in seeing resolution, we have an ambulance on order, our second ambulance. And if this, some type of future of the ambulance can't be envisioned, we have to decide in Dodge Center if that two hundred thousand dollar expenditure is something we should make or not. If we're gonna continue to operate and handle twelve hundred calls a year we handle, we need that ambulance.
Okay. Yes, my opinion is, I think we've talked about this before when Tim's been in the meeting, come back, was, my personal opinion is I'm in, more in favor of the special taxing district versus having it be just part of our levy. Things just keep lumped in there, and then the question always comes up, what are we getting for that? And this just separates that. And people understand, I think everybody, when I was, I was talking to my, who's the intergovernmental relations person at the League of Minnesota Cities today, cause I see one of their priorities is here's EM, emergency medical services. So I put in my plug that maybe they waited too long to address this, and now is the time. So hopefully that would help. I think if we had that, it could be variable from year to year. Um, that's just my two cents from where we're at as a...
I sit on a, a couple different boards, and one is part of the AM Association, which, so we go to the state.
Okay.
And we're, that's a priority right now, too, is funding for us. Um, and, and we hope, and actually, at the state level, they, they have some, uh, they have a task force or a committee, I forget what, which one they call it, um, put together right now, searching for ideas. But they're, I mean, we can hope they come up with something, but.
Right.
We, we can't depend on it unfortunately. And that could be, you know, actually that could be ten years from now that they come up to with a solution. Um, so, um, yeah, we're pushing for it also, and we hope, yeah, that this number can go away, right? That would be the idea, um, because we get federal and, um, state support, but we can't depend on it unfortunately. We're all, all services, um, in the whole nation are submitting data to CMS, uh, for Medicare, Medicaid, uh, right now. They, uh, everybody's mandated to report, um, in order, they're doing a study, too, to figure out what should they be reimbursing at. Uh, and hopefully people are doing that, so that way our rates can go up. But again, it's government, we don't know how fast it's going to act for us. Um, so, I mean, their study is going through next year. After that, everybody should have reported, um, after twenty twenty-five. So, um, the hope would be a few years after that, something would come out, but...
Anybody else?
Um, yeah, let me ask you a couple of questions here, and forgive my ignorance, cause I don't really know anything about this, but.
Yeah.
Um, you said that Medicare and Medicaid are only paying about forty percent of your bill?
Probably less, more like thirty-three-ish.
Whatever it is, it's fine. My, my question is, is why is the remainder not billed to the patient?
You can't balance bill in the state of Minnesota.
So the state's forcing you not to? Okay.
And actually, that's pretty common with government.
Kind of what I assumed.
Yeah.
The state's getting in the way again.
We're gonna, most of our bills are like fifteen hundred to twenty-five hundred dollars or more.
Yeah.
Four hundred.
Right. So I assume people who aren't on Medicare and have their own insurance, their bill is fully covered by their insurance usually?
Uh, pending deductible and, and that kinda thing, yeah. Um, and it's, so Blue Cross Blue Shield is another one. These insurance companies, what they do is they try to negotiate a lower rate with our billing companies. So we don't do any billing in-house, it's third-party. Um, it's another, it's a bigger billing service who have, uh, who are experts in it, I, I guess. Um, and they, um, the insurance companies try to negotiate a lower rate for those bills. Um, and there's a few insurance providers who just won't pay, uh, very much beyond even Medicare and Medicaid. Blue Cross being one of them who is kinda towards that lower end, too, which you wouldn't think. Blue Cross is usually a fairly good insurance for people. And it's great for people, not great for us who provide the care and want the, they need the funds.
Okay. Um, do most of your trips end up going to Mayo, or all of them?
I, over, I, I don't know a percentage exactly, but I would guess at least ninety-five percent, somewhere in that range, go to St. Mary's Hospital. Ninety to ninety-five percent go to St. Mary's.
Sorry, where's St. Mary's?
Mayo.
Okay.
Is, St. Mary's is the ER building, yeah, sorry.
So if I'm not mistaken, if you guys have to dissolve because you're insolvent, wouldn't Mayo have to take over service?
Not necessarily. Um, it would, if, if we dissolved, I'm, I'm sure that would be the hope. Um, there's a few different ways that could go. Uh, there's a lot of, um, there's a, there's a state board called the EMSRB, Regulatory Board for Ambulances, and if we were to dissolve, they would get involved and, and help. Um, but what they try to do is help decide what's best for the community in the sense of, what's the closest ambulance, what's the most appropriate ambulance, that kinda thing. I don't know their exact process, um, but that's usually the way it looks, um, from that aspect. But if, I mean, it, I, I think anybody in the area would have the right to say, we can't do it, um, cause they can't. If, if they can't do it, they can't do it, so...
Can I chime in on that?
Yeah.
Um, this is not a finance thing, so if I'm overstepping, just tell me. Um, if that was the case, and let's say they could take it over, I think your call time, your, the response times are gonna go up at least ten minutes.
I, I completely understand, yeah. Um, I'm just, like, I'm trying to wrap my head around how this works. Cause I grew up in rural Wisconsin, and where I grew up, you know, whatever hospital was the closest, they sent out an ambulance. So this whole, like, ambulance service thing is, is completely foreign to me.
Does a lot better job of funding their ambulance services.
So I guess the, the ultimate question is, is, is there anything we can do with Mayo to see if we can't get them to help, help you guys? Cause ultimately, it, it might be a burden on them if, if something goes wrong.
Right. Um, I guess it could be, um...
We've had conversations with Mayo.
Yeah.
About where we're at.
Um, and, and they are, uh, to be honest, we, we've been there, uh, uh, last year we went there a handful of times because they didn't have a truck available to go to a call, right? Um, which in the amount of calls they do, a handfuls, maybe that, not that much. Um, but, uh, and, and I know Hayfield's done a couple for them, too. Um, and West Concord goes to Owatonna sometimes, very rarely, but every once in a while to help them out. They're dealing with the same issue that is happening nationwide, um, in EMS with their staffing issues. Um, and so, uh, yeah, I mean, I, I guess, um, you know, that, I don't know what kinda burden they would feel, but I, and I don't know exactly if they would have to take it over type of situation if we failed, or if it's their choice. Um, I'm not sure of that exact, um, response.
Yeah, I guess I'd just like to see, you know, if we're gonna be looking at, trying to pull some funds together through a taxing system here, if maybe Mayo can get involved and maybe help a little bit to try and ease the burden a bit, since you're, you're delivering patients to them, I mean.
Right.
Um, alright, and then...
I, I can tell you that their ambulance service is not doing any better financially than the average ambulance service. Um, and so for them to hand funds to us, I, I see where your point going, uh, there, uh, I think would be a, a big task to ask of, of them. And I, I don't foresee it happening, but I'm, I guess we can give it an ask, but...
I think it's a good situation, but again, it's, it's a response time, it's very, very important.
Yeah, and, and having, having the ambulance in Dodge Center, even if it was, you know, had some funding for Mayo, would benefit everybody, it seems. Because, like I said, if, if Mayo, I, again, we don't know, presumably they get forced to have to cover the area, you know, their costs are gonna go up even more, cause now they have to drive further, they have to get more equipment, too. So it, I don't know. In my head, it seems like it might be a beneficial...
They don't have to get more equipment.
Yeah.
All Mayo has to do is have an ambulance, and then thirty minutes of CASN, illegal.
Yep. So currently, they go to Byron, they don't staff a truck in Byron. It comes out of, like, West Circle Drive, um, there in Rochester.
They might choose to staff out in basic.
Yeah, but that's up to them, depending on staffing models and that type of thing. Um, it would all depend on how the dissolving would work, on how the logistics would work with licensers and that kinda thing. There's a lot of different scenarios that could happen, and so I, I think a lot of your questions depend on what happens, um, unfortunately.
Yeah, okay. And then, um, I guess a question for Mike. Um, the taxes you're showing up there, I'm, I'm curious, is, is there, is it possible to do a flat tax system instead of a, a property value weighted? Because to me, this, like, the service is the same regardless of whether it's a eight hundred thousand dollar property or a hundred thousand dollar property.
Yeah, unfortunately, no. Um, we looked into that question early on. Um, state law really doesn't allow for it, and the county really doesn't have...
Cause it seems like a special assessment, and special assessments are, are flat based upon properties, right?
Unfortunately, special assessments, there's a listing of what's allowed to be specially assessed.
And emergency services is not allowed?
So, yeah, that was one of the first questions that I had.
I, I really don't like the idea of why, you know, uh, property value has to affect how much somebody's paying for an ambulance service.
Cause what I thought I was gonna get back is pushback from the townships, which, which I didn't, was, cause they get told their levy based on the number of households they have, but then that levy gets spread across everything, including farmland.
Right.
There's no way to separate it out and just say these homes get taxed and, um, and, or to separate it out by the lack of value, like everyone gets the same.
Okay. Anything else? That's all I have for now.
Nope. Dan, anything?
I just gotta comment on what Mike said earlier. The Southeast Minnesota League is talking on a Tuesday, the twenty, whatever, Tuesday, next. Whatever the Tuesday coming up is. It'll be twenty eighth.
Thirty.
Alright. And it'll be at the Mayo Civic Center. So there's more, people more welcome to come, and they're gonna be lobbying with the state, and they've been, Southeast League's been working on it for over a year already. So, trying to get the state involved, get an answer.
We've got Senator Nelson out, and she's on ride-alongs, and she's actually seen some calls that she maybe wishes she hadn't, but she's gotten to see the value that the ambulance brings, and she's been very committed to looking at what's trying to help with funding.
Ryan, Mel, anything?
So your, your date is twenty twenty-five, or when you go into the negatives, is that when you dissolve then?
I think what they could probably do is.
Could you, if you, do you have a projected time?
We don't. We, we don't, um, and, and because there's a lot of variables in that, um, we, we don't necessarily have like a cut and dry, like January first, twenty twenty-five, we're out of business kinda thing.
It's part of a function of the capital equipment that they buy.
Right.
So, you know, they could like, so I'm showing it happening in twenty-six without, without support. Um, so they might be able to back off some of the capital purchases and buy some extra time?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Those are potentially possible.
Like Leo indicated, the ambulance that's on order, you have to order them two years ahead of time, uh, in order to get them. And I've already, initially, the, the, we were supposed to take delivery November of this year, and I have called and asked, can we delay that till January of twenty-five? Uh, in an effort to maybe have something by then. Um, because we have two ambulances, and, um, realistically, I don't know how much longer we can limp along the other one. Um, and for anybody that knows, our, our second ambulance runs anywhere between a hundred, a hundred and fifty calls a year. Um, and then, and then the first runs over nine hundred, obviously, um, closer to a thousand. Uh, and so we, and we try to keep them as fresh as we can. Unfortunately, we are in the situation of, where the two ambulances were bought in the past pretty close together, and so now they were close together. Cause we just took delivery May of last year of our newest one. Um, so, yeah.
Okay. Mel, anything?
I don't have anything.
Nope. Okay, so you said you're looking to get answers to this pretty soon?
Yeah.
Is it like tonight, or two weeks?
We're looking for commitments from everybody, but we all would like an indication of whether there's support for the concept or not. Um, obviously, nobody can be bound until you've negotiated legal agreements and whatnot.
Sure.
Sure.
But if, if you guys are gonna tell us, "No, it's a hard noble figure it out," then our question is, why should we spend money trying to figure out how to include you guys in something? We need to know what we're dealing with.
Right.
Going forward, to be as efficient with the money as we can be. We can't require any kind of answer tonight, but it'd be helpful if we at least got some feel of, either, yeah, we'd like to keep exploring this, or, or no, we don't.
All of the cities, um, use the same bond counsel firm, TAF Law, and we have an attorney at their firm waiting to find out what we find out. We've told them, "We don't want you doing anything until we know what we're pursuing," and what, what I'm hearing is this, I don't know how to describe this dual situation of district and joint powers, but that was to ju- just go around and get, conceptually, people to agree, "Yeah, that's the way to go," and then from there, we get them to draw the specifics.
We talked to Claire about it a couple of weeks ago, and they said, "Yeah, we think you should keep pursuing this."
We think we wanna be involved in the investigation of this.
Okay, anybody have strong feelings either way? So, can you give an indication?
Personally, I'm, I'm in favor of having the ambulance service in, in Dodge County, in our, in our area. Um, I'm not interested in all of having a response from Rochester. Um, that's just me personally, having used the ambulance service several times. Um, it's one of those things you don't like paying for, but when you do, it's like any other insurance policy you have, it stinks until you need it. Um, so, I'm in favor of having something, again, if we continue with, "Hey, go ahead and start," I, I'm really in favor of the district versus the joint powers, just because it separates it from the levy process and it's different. I'm with Paul, I wish we, the state would get out of the way and let us not tie it to value, but that's just my opinion, so, but everybody else chime in, and we can kinda give them a, a direction to, to go.
With the, um, the special taxing district, is that something that can get changed? How would, how would the tax on that change in the future? Say, say we set up the tax in the, the method where it's not each city, right, it's a...
Yep, it's a separate board.
Um, if, let's say the state decides to give aid.
Yep.
Um, can that tax then be reduced or eliminated?
Correct, every year you would set this amount.
And who, 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 who sets that then?
The board, and, and the board would be established through the bylaws, and, and it would probably include a couple of members from CASM, a couple of members from Manorville.
So, they'd be kind of like elected?
Yep, it'd be like a city council.
Appointment.
Running Tim through the wringer on the budget, this group would be able to run AJ through the wringer.
Okay.
So, that was kinda my question earlier, was that the first year is forty-nine, but then the second year, if the budget's fine, or say the state comes through the funding, it might be zero. It might be five dollars a household, or, you know, it could be nothing.
And, and, and what you're describing is our hope, is that the state will come in and...
Right.
But I think once it's established, even if they were to provide so many, so much funds, I would say you just keep it that way, because now you've got a whole separate board, and you can get, wipe your hands of the responsibility.
Right.
And have people that are gonna be spending their whole, but you have to know everything, you have to know a little bit about everything. Whereas, the people you send to this board are gonna become specialized and can really help run that thing well, even if it someday was fully funded by outside sources. So, Mike, one more thing we should mention, we really haven't, is that, from our investigation to date, it's not really practical for Dodge Center to transfer the license. So, even if there's a special taxing agency that controls the money, as the license holder, we'd have to probably contract with the taxing visitor to provide the license and the, the people to go with it. Just because we've got the licenses in our name.
Oh, right.
And transferring is not practical.
But, but you, but the board would be in charge of all the financing.
They'd have the first right, so that's gonna be levied.
They would have control of the banking account, yeah.
They would control that sense of it. And with any contract you have, you have control over the contractor working for you to some extent.
Right. And I know, so, one issue that's been brought up before is, you know, like, name change and that, 'cause it does say, you know, Dodge Center on our ambulance, um, that kinda thing. Um, name change process can happen, um, that, that is, that is a possibility, um...
We don't care what it says on the status sheet.
We just wanted to show up and be present.
Or if you get it in the house, that's the main thing.
Um, so, I, I know that was one concern that was brought up to us, so...
Okay, anybody else?
I mean, I think it's something that we should pursue.
Okay.
I agree, we pursue it, but if there's ever a chance to have, I know we've had the ambulance from you guys in town prior, correct?
So, it, it's kind of misleading, I guess, unless you knew the operations of the ambulance, although there was an ambulance in town, it doesn't necessarily mean it always came from in town.
Just with us having so many people in town.
Right.
Compared to other areas, it'd be nice to have a little more service. The service time would be lower if you were in town.
Yeah, um...
Not necessarily, though, just from experience, when I had, when I used the service, there was an ambulance parked right at the little building down here, but it came from Dodge Center.
Right.
And they were on a call in Claremont when they came to the clinic.
Depends on if they already had a call or not.
The, the...
Right, but there was nobody to staff this one.
Um, is that, we have a crew quarters, a nice place for people to be at, um, there in Dodge Center, right? Um, and so that's where our staff usually stays.
Yeah.
Um, yes, we do have some CASM firefighters and CASM non-firefighters on the service, um, where sometimes they would grab that truck and have a little quicker response than maybe a couple Dodge Center people grabbing that truck, or even a person coming from Claremont.
Well, potentially, though, you could have a location here, it's just that you're gonna have to add it to the...
Right, yeah, I mean, yeah, and I...
That's down the road.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I get that.
Um, I'm, I'm open to anything and everything, as long as we can afford it and still maintain the service.
Okay, so, Dan, Paul, pursue, I mean...
I'd say pursue, I just, uh, wish the state would move a little faster and make sure you guys come to the meeting and...
We can wish it one, yeah.
Yeah, thirtieth.
And see if we can get some more input.
Yeah.
Okay.
Keep it rolling.
Alright, so does that give you what you need for tonight?
I think that's efficient of us to work, we do thank you for the time, but that conversation was great, we hope for that.
Okay, perfect, well, thanks for coming, yep, drive safe. Alright, thanks, Mike, appreciate your time tonight.
I'm, I'm not leaving.
Oh, you're here for the, okay, never mind, alright, you're on the backside of the agenda too, alright.
Can't get rid of him.
Okay, we're gonna move on to Mayor's report, the only thing I have on our Mayor's report is, we haven't talked yet about, usually we do a planning session in March on a Saturday morning, so I don't know if everybody's got, or if you want, Linda, if you wanna maybe reach out to Tim? 'Cause I think him and I talked about it once briefly in the fall, and then we should put something together, but we should probably, everybody at the next meeting, or between now and then, might get an email. If you know there's a Saturday that doesn't work or something, we'll, we'll send something out before the next meeting.
Sixteenth.
Yeah, and I'm at, at that and that, so, probably the first or second, if we're looking at that Saturday.
Second one would be...
Good, or in a bad?
The ninth would be good, the first weekend of the middle school musical.
Okay, I'm just kidding, yeah. So, if everybody can check their schedule?
The second is good? The ninth would be great.
Ninth is better.
Ninth is good.
Ninth looks good for me, too.
Ninth is good for me, too.
Dan?
Nothing on my calendar.
Alright, that's good, the ninth. Um, so we'll just let Tim know, and then we can get something together on that, but we'll just plan on that for now, eight AM here at City Hall, so... Thanks, everybody, what's that?
Coffee again?
Yeah, coffee, a banana or something, yeah. Okay, on to E, uh, we have a public hearing regarding the TIFF district here, let me get my... Okay, do we wanna have a presentation first, or open the public hearing? What would make the most sense?
Presentation.
Presentation.
Presentation, Mike. Just had to make you get up and down, stay warm.
Okay, um, I expect council's fairly, uh, familiar with what's going on, but, uh, just for the benefit of the public, uh, the city, uh, has been working, uh, with a company, they've established an LLC called Access Development LLC, um, to construct a forty-eight unit multifamily apartment complex in the Vales Second Subdivision. Um, they are pursuing, uh, tax credits for this project, and they're also pursuing, uh, state financing, and they're requesting taxing and financing from the city as well. Um, I'll talk to you about the manner in which that assistance will be provided in a moment, but just first to talk about the technicalities of taxing and financing in general. So, basically, um, this geographic area will be isolated, and the future city, county, and school taxes that are generated due to the increased market value of the site will be isolated and sent back to the city to infuse back into the project, with the, with the understanding that the project could not have occurred without the assistance in the first place. Um, now, some folks will say, "Well, wait a minute, that's an increase in my taxes," the answer is no, um, because you could choose to do nothing, and you could get nothing. No apartment building, the ground would stay bare. So, basically, you're just agreeing to forego the incremental new taxes that are generated for a period of time. The type of TIFF district that's being created, there's different types, this one would be housing, and this requires th- there to be income limits on the apartment building. So, at least forty percent of the units have to be, uh, reserved for, uh, income restricted families. It doesn't necessarily mean they have to be filled, if you had ten units apartments, and there was four that were controlled, doesn't mean those four have to be filled, it just means they have to be reserved for income-qualified folks. So, if they can't find people, that's fine, they can still comply with the rules. They actually shouldn't have any trouble, because the tax credit program itself is gonna require the entire facility. The, the, the TIFF law that we're dealing with only requires forty percent of the units, but the tax credits they're pursuing requires the whole property to be, um, compliant. Um, these housing taxing and financing districts can go up to twenty-six years in life, and originally, the negotiations with the company was to have a contract for a shorter period of time. Since that time, classification rates on these tax credit projects have changed. Basically, the property taxes that they're generating is going way, 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 way down. And what that means is, in order to get enough money coming back over time, they ask for the, the extension of the contract. So, this contract actually would go, um, for the entire life of the TIFF district, unless tax increments come at a higher level than what I'm anticipating, in which case then potentially you could get out of it early. But they have to agree to comply with these, uh, income restrictions for the life. Um, if you're wondering what are these income limits, it's adjusted for family size, but to give you an idea, it's probably somewhere between thirty-five and forty-five thousand dollars a year for your two- or three-person families, and then the rest of the units can be, outside of the tax credit compliance, can be whatever they want. Um, in your packets, there's a copy of a TIFF plan, if you were to look at it, you'd see the first part talks about a modified development program for Municipal Development District Number One. All that is, is before cities can create taxing and financing, uh, districts, at one point, they had to have a public hearing and identify a geographic area and say, "In this area, we're gonna pursue projects, housing projects, commercial projects, industrial projects, doesn't matter," you had to have this underlying project area. And so, most communities will make that co-terminis with the city's limits, and then you create TIFF districts inside of this area. So, for instance, this district is gonna be numbered one-dash-nineteen, it's the nineteenth TIFF district that the city will have had over all these years in this Municipal Development District Number One. But the reason for the modification is simply because, since the last time we did a TIFF district, corporate limits have changed in CASM. And so, basically, we're saying we are restating that as co-terminis with the city limits as it exists today. And the planning commission did meet and adopt a resolution, uh, supporting that nothing we're doing is, um, contrary to your overall long-term goals. Um, in the TIFF plan itself is a budget, uh, we cannot exceed the budget, um, that's on, uh, page five, section seven. In the back of the TIFF plan are multiple exhibits, um, you don't need to turn to these, or, or you can if you like. Exhibit two basically is showing that the existing parcel is anticipated to have an initial value of about seventy-eight thousand dollars. The taxes generated on that initial value, we don't get to touch, so, you know, nobody's losing any revenue, again, we're just foregoing the new incremental taxes caused by the development. Exhibit three, um, um, is a projection of what the tax increments might be over the life of this deal. We're anticipating a completed taxable value of six-point-one million, and based on that increased value, um, we're gonna see tax increment coming into the tune of about eighteen to nineteen thousand dollars a year, and the city will keep ten percent of that for administrative purposes. You'll never spend that ten percent, you're gonna bank that ten percent, and you can use that for other affordable housing projects elsewhere in the city, or you could return it to the county, who will separate it into regular city-county taxes, and then you will get that money back as unbudgeted revenue, you can use it for whatever you want. Um, anyways, over the life of the deal, the TIFF plan over the full twenty-six collections is anticipating total collections of about four-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand dollars. I did have some back and forth with the developers over the interest rate, that they wanna have assigned to their contract. So, either we could have a four-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand dollar contract at zero percent interest, or we can have whatever interest rate you want, and we just reduce the principal amount. But the total payments going out the door won't change. But because of their pursuit of financing with some state programs, those programs wanna see the interest rate match their loans, and so we've used sixth and a quarter percent, and so of that four-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand dollars, only a hundred-and-ninety thousand and change is actually, uh, going to be principal. Again, if the revenues come in greater than what we're anticipating here, potentially, we could pay this off early and get out of the deal. I think that's unlikely, but that's a possibility. Exhibit four, um, basically says, "Okay, Mike, what if this TIFF district wasn't necessary, let's say they just built it, it was magically there today like this, and so it's helping pay the current tax levy, how much would tax rates go down?" Um, between the city and the county and the school, they would go down point-one-six percent. So, you know, people get bogged down in the, in the principle of the thing, you know, should we do TIFF or shouldn't we do TIFF? But in, when it comes to the actual calculation on what impact this has on somebody's tax statement, it, it's negligible, right? Um, finally, exhibit five, and I always refer to this as a bogus exhibit, and it basically says, "Okay, so you're using TIFF and you're getting this apartment complex, but what if you didn't do TIFF, something else might occur that would have a greater value." And we're basically saying, "No, it, we expect that the property will probably sit in its current state for the foreseeable future, and the only benefit we would get is the increased inflation on that seventy-eight thousand dollar initial value, which doesn't add up to much." So, we're doing better for using TIFF than, than without. Okay, as far as the, um, actual deal, uh, with the company, uh, they'll agree to create this forty-eight unit complex, um, they should get started by June first of this year, be significantly done by the end of two thousand twenty-five. Um, reserve the number of units for the income restricted families as discussed, and then each year, by January fifteenth, they are supposed to certify with the city that they are in compliance, on forms prescribed by the city and any supporting documentation that you require. So, it has to be done annually, um, before you can, and the reason we go with January fifteenth is that we are doing a August first, February first payment structure. So, prior to February first, you wanna have that certification in place by January fifteenth, so you have time to cut checks and so forth. Um, we agree to reimburse the hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars in six-point-two-five percent interest, and this is being provided on a pay-as-you-go basis. So, if for some reason, the value on the property isn't as high as what we say, tax rates change, classification rates change, the developer simply doesn't pay their taxes, if it doesn't come in, we don't pay it, there is no financial risk to the city here. And if we get to the end of the contract and there's still a balance that remains unpaid, it doesn't matter, we unwind the deal, we don't come up with a shortfall. So, it's completely risk-free, this is called pay-as-you-go financing, we're not fronting any money and taking on any risk, it's all on theirs, on their shoulders. Um, and then, uh, they also indemnify the city for the project, and all that means is, and the example I always give, is, let's say there's some contractor up on a ladder building this building, and he falls off, and he hurts himself, and he sues the city, because if the city hadn't have provided TIFF, that building wouldn't be built, and he wouldn't have been on that ladder, so it's your fault. They take on all that liability. And then all you agree to do is, um, reimburse up to that principal amount of hundred-and-ninety thousand and change plus interest, using, you know, ninety percent of what you collected, and the final payment will be February first of two thousand fifty-two, or until the contract is paid, whatever is sooner. And there is an actual full-blown contract, I believe, in your packets as well, I was just summarizing, summarizing the highlight, high points there. That's ten minutes of your life you'll never get back, I'll take questions.
Thanks, Mike, appreciate that.
Yeah, wake up.
Send the air ten minutes out, send my person. Alright, any questions for Mike? Okay, I mean, okay.
Okay, um, as I leave, uh, just two other items, if you, after the public hearing is completed, there is a resolution to adopt that would approve the TIFF district. If you read the resolution carefully, you'll see there's, uh, language in there authorizing an interfund loan. I don't expect you're actually gonna use that authority, but if you don't provide that authority, and then for some reason you decide to do an interfund loan from this district, you would have done so illegally, so we just throw that in there to protect you. So we just throw that in there to protect you, but you won't use it. And then, lastly, is the development contract. If that is to your liking, so one motion to approve the resolution, and then another motion to authorize mayor and staff to execute the contract with the developer, and then Ian can reach out to the developers and get their signatures as well. One final point. In the development contract itself, this pay-as-you-go stuff is all talked about in the exhibit in the back, and it's called a revenue note. And you're supposed to certify the day that you give them that note, because that's the day at which that six point two five percent interest will start kicking in. You don't certify that note to the developer until the building is complete.
Oh, so we don't have a date to say.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Appreciate it.
Okay, with that, we will open the public hearing for anyone that has anything they'd like to say or share.
Good evening. Megan Carr was saying development, representing the owner here. Just a couple things to note. First of all, we really appreciate, I know you guys have been working on other things on this project, we're really excited to get started, hoping to break ground, you know, in May is what we're currently targeting. I had a conversation with Minnesota Housing today. The tax credits and the financing have been secured for Minnesota Housing, so this is really the last piece that we need final approval on. And then we'll work into our closing timeline. From the point where we get through Minnesota Housing's initial process, it's ninety to a hundred and twenty days to close. So we're within weeks of getting to that time period that we can start the ninety to a hundred and twenty days. One other, one thing I did want to note is, because incomes here are a little bit higher, I just looked up the income limit, and the numbers he gave there are more like forty, I think forty-five to fifty-five thousand, or fifty, like some, yeah. I was like, oh, that seems really low, I better double-check. So the numbers, let me just pull them up really quick. If you look at household sizes, it's under sixty percent, so a household size of one would be just under, what'd you say?
We're in Rochester, and I said that.
Yeah, yeah. Fifty thousand, we refer one person, family of four, for sixty thousand, would be about seventy-one thousand. So I just want to make sure that you guys are aware of that. And then the other thing that I would request is with the development agreement, Minnesota Housing's attorneys, our attorneys, and our lender's attorneys have not reviewed that. So we would ask, I don't know if it's in the motion right now, or if it can be considered, but that staff would be able to negotiate that with us in good faith, because I know with these development agreements, all of those attorneys will have comments, unfortunately. And it's just a matter of timing and reviewing those. So I don't know if that's possible to do that, but just wanted to note that we would appreciate not having to come back and re-present it again, but if that's required, we'll definitely do that. And I'm happy to answer any questions about the project or where we're at, so.
So the build time, December twenty-five, a year and a half?
Yeah, it'll be about twelve months construction, but we build in a little bit of extra time, just in case circumstances change or something. But right now, our contract is twelve months.
Okay. Anybody else got questions? Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Okay, until the second, so we have two different things to take action on tonight. The first one is resolution to approve the TIF, the districting there. So any questions or comments on that? I'll entertain a motion to approve. Thanks, Meldo. A second?
I'll second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution passes, thank you. The second one is execute the contract with developer, which was Mike was asking, was that the document you're asking that you want leeway to be able to?
See, are you talking about the TIF development agreement, or the developer agreement with TAF to do it the site itself?
Oh, okay. Well, the developer agreement, was that at the last council meeting, and draft version was approved.
That's right, we might have to come back, and that's okay.
But the one included in the package tonight is the TIF developer agreement.
Okay. Thanks, Dan. What's anybody's feelings on that? I mean, we can approve it, it's got to be negotiated.
Right. I was just wondering what our attorney would think, do we want to allow the negotiation with staff, or do you want them to come back? What's the easiest and what's the best?
I don't think I'm advising you on this one. I think this is TAF helping with these agreements.
TAF did the TIF contract. But they didn't do the, I don't know who did the developer agreement, was that you?
No.
Oh.
That was the, the developer agreement.
Did our, do we have our legal team review that agreement?
It was in the packet last, last, or last meeting.
Okay, no, the one we have tonight, though.
Well, that's in the packet tonight.
Yep.
That was drafted by TAF.
That was drafted.
Okay, that was by TAF, okay. I'm getting confused with all the different attorneys that got involved here, so. I have no problem approving it. I mean, obviously, we're going to have to, if there's something that's, you have to come back for, I guess you'd have to come back for it?
Yeah, that's right. We've worked with Mary at both other projects, so if she says we have to come back, we'll come back.
Okay.
How we've done it sometimes is we schedule it right before closing, we'll come back to the city council for a final approval. We did that in St. Michael, where I think we, I don't like to do it this way, but we're coming back like two nights before closing. So hopefully, we'll come back a couple of weeks beforehand. But if she advises that we need to come back, then we would do that. But if you feel comfortable putting it in there, you know, pending her review and approval, then she can decide if that's sufficient or not.
She put that in there, and if we weren't comfortable with whatever her argument, then we would have to have you come back to.
Yeah. However you feel like doing it, I just, like I said, it, sometimes, I don't anticipate, I mean, there's not, I don't think there's going to be, there won't be a council change, but sometimes you run into issues where the TIF gets approved, and then the council changes, and we're coming back for just like one, like an insert of language from the lender, and then like somebody on the council decides they don't like TIF, and all of a sudden, the whole deal gets blown up a week before closing. So that's why we just ask.
We'll assume we're not going to have that.
Yeah, I hope not.
We'll go ahead, put it to a vote to approve it, if you need to come back, you can come back.
That's fine, no problem, yeah.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions on the second part for the execute the contract with the developer?
Not a question, but are we, are we still in the public hearing?
No.
Okay. I didn't know if we got out of the public hearing.
I started the public hearing.
Okay. I didn't know if we could vote while we were in it.
Oh. Did I say we're?
It's officially closed.
It's officially closed.
Okay. Okay. I didn't, I just want to make sure.
Thank you. Yep, no, that's a good question. I skipped that part procedurally. Robert's Rules of Orders, be damned. All right, under the contract, execute the contract with the developer, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Thanks, Ryan. Do a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks. Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And thank you again for coming, appreciate it. Thanks, Mike. All right, to committee report, landscape ordinance discussion.
Thank you. I just wanted to have a bit of a discussion about this. It was brought up at our last planning commission meeting. Basically, the situation is that there are two projects in Cassin going on right now. Minnesota A Group and A&amp;A Electric, they're both doing expansion projects right now. And as part of that process, they have applied for administrative site plan reviews. And part of that process is having landscape plans reviewed by city staff and consultants. And so with that, there's city ordinances specifically describing what's required in those landscaping plans. But the plans that were submitted by both groups were found to be largely not compliant with the city's requirements. And so, with that, they both originally requested to have deviations permitted from the code requirements, which would be, they're talking about a variance, but as variances are rather notorious, and in the case of these, there's just not very much justification for a variance, because, you know, anyone could have asked for the same thing if they have a similar situation. But with that, that being the case, we would instead be looking at changing the code in some way. And so I have appeared, this is the section from the city's ordinances that describes landscaping. And then I've also included further down below what was submitted so far for their landscaping plans. This first one here is Minnesota A Group, and, let's see, so what they've got is a few planted areas of shrubs and shrub-like plants. When the landscape ordinance specifically says they need a certain number of trees and a certain number of shrubs, based on street frontage and based on the square footage of new construction that they're proposing. So in that sense, they're not compliant. And then this one here is for Minnesota, sorry, for A&amp;A Electric. And same situation, they're required to have a certain number of trees, and a certain number of shrubs, based on new construction. But in both cases, the arguments that they were making was that having these landscape requirements for this particular type of district is not fitting with the district characteristics. Minnesota A Group is in the C-three highway commercial district, and so their argument is basically that having so much dense landscaping is, can act like an obstruction, whereas it doesn't, it doesn't allow you to take advantage of high traffic counts of things along the highway when you, when you see business, but then you see landscaping instead. And then just other than that, when the site was initially developed years and years and years ago, the guidance was that landscaping, the landscaping requirements basically were not what they were, not what they are today. And so with that, I've done a bit of research into what could be done compared to what other cities have, and what some guidance is from the Green Step Cities Program. And basically, there's a wide variety of what could be done. Sometimes it's differentiated, there are requirements based on the district itself or different uses. And then there's also provisions that could be made if the requirements can't necessarily be met, such as putting up like a decorative fence, or if you go above and beyond with shrub count or tree counts, just if the site can't support one thing over the other, or even considering a conditional use permit process for landscaping requirements. And so, that's kind of where we're at. There was some discussion at the planning commission meeting, and at the end of it, there was a recommendation to move forward with a public hearing process to consider amending the code. And so basically, I just wanted maybe some thoughts from the council here tonight, if there's a certain direction, based on everything I've described, going forward.
So part of this too, I'm sorry, they, the reason they brought it forward too is, they also have restrictions because of the state right-of-way and county right-of-way, where they wouldn't be able to put trees in anyways. So then they're limited to where they could put them, and that would obstruct their business.
Could we, this is the park board side of me talking here, could they, they were going to have to follow this ordinance, could we have them purchase and donate those to our local parks? So they, they're still purchasing them, then we just, they don't have to, if they're going to be obstructions, they're going to be an issue, have them donate them to our local parks so that they're still being used? Because that green space is what our goal is, right? Now we're just putting them somewhere else?
Well, the other part too is, when they came, they want to put a ninety-two hundred square foot addition on Minnesota A Group. If they don't forego to that, they won't have to put any plant in it. So they were trying to expand a business which expands property tax base. So by adding trees, you're just, you know, you're putting a burden on, you know, I can see it both ways, but I can see where there is absolutely no shrubbery there, no trees there now. You know, so if you ask them, just because they want to expand, that they need that, that's just another way of hindering business to come to town to expand in town, I think. And that's kind of, kind of, some of the talk from planners only was, is we're trying to grow, not, well, we're trying to find a.
I had no idea that was in our ordinance. Most people don't. Required a business in an industrial area to plant a tree. Not for that, because it's trees, but it's like, if I were building those buildings, I wouldn't want to have anything I had to maintain, or obstruct, or obstruct the view of security. I want people, the chief to be able to drive by and see who's running through my property, and have, instead of having it obstructed by bushes or trees on my implement dealer.
Ian, does this have to do with the Green Step stuff? Is that why we have it in our code?
I don't believe it's specifically because of Green Steps. Green Steps for these programs just has like model ordinances for a variety of different subjects, including landscape requirements. So that's just kind of where I went to for inspiration.
So is this for, this particular one fifty-four dot three-ten, is that for commercial property? Or is that include homes too? Because it says down below, all residential one and two-unit developments, a one-unit development, is that a house? A normal home? It says there, we have to have two trees in the city.
Right. Single-family homes and like duplexes are technically supposed to have like trees, but they don't have to necessarily submit a landscaping plan. The requirement for submitting a landscaping plan is for anything else, basically.
I'm all in favor of having a public hearing to amend this.
Yes.
Okay.
Because we're not following it. I mean, I built the house ten years ago. I didn't, nobody told me I had to have flan, or trees in the boulevard, which I wouldn't want it anyway, I'd mow them down. Because I don't want to deal with the mess that they create. So, that's just me personally.
No.
So, but I mean, if this is our ordinance, we haven't, we haven't been following it at all, because we built fifty houses a year the last seven years, and I bet forty of those houses every year, you have to order boulevard trees from the city. We're not just automatically making them, planting them, or put them in. So I don't know, we aren't, we aren't following the ordinance anyway. So if I were the two commercial applicants, I'd be like, you haven't been following it forever anyway, I'm not following it either.
Another part, like my house, you can't put two.
Right.
There's not room for two, because they have to be so many feet apart, and they have to be so many feet off your driveway. It's like twenty-five feet off your driveway and twenty-five feet apart. So they won't even fit in the majority of lots, would not be able to have.
So it needs to be addressed somehow, some way to get the public's input on that. I'm not, nothing against trees, a good tree is a nice tree, as long as it's somewhere Rake too many maple trees for how many years, and the neighbors' maple trees.
The wall of trees.
I really think we should have some delineation in there for different zoning.
Yeah, I mean, commercial area like that with an industrial area, if I had an industrial building, last thing I want to do is worry about maintaining the landscaping. You're there to build things and ship things and receive things, and if you have a customer area where people come in and you want it to look that, that's your prerogative. If it enhances your business to make your building more attractive to people who come into, as a business owner, that's your choice, and it should be a priority for you. And if it's not, well, then that's your choice on the commercial side of it, so.
What I understand is that the ordinance was apparently passed in October of two thousand and twenty. I don't even have any recollection of addressing that.
I don't remember even looking at it, yeah. Yeah, I saw the date, I was like, all right, that's why I'm, I'm lost.
The home was pulled up down for updated in two thousand and twenty?
Oh, so it's just part of the lump.
Probably lumped in, then.
Yeah, Dave.
What is the funeral home? What did they do?
I haven't visited there lately, I have no idea.
I don't think there's.
What if they had landscaping? I don't, I don't.
I don't think they have any trees, they might have some shrubs, but if you did an overview, which at planning zoning, we had an overview of that whole area, there's very minimal.
Have we held any other business to this ordinance?
No.
Has that built the last four years?
No, not at all. And that's, but it just showed up, so that's why.
It should review it, so that way if somebody does come, we adhere to the rules and we're going to follow them.
Yes.
It's like all the other, a lot of the other conditional use permits we've gone through over the years, is we issue these conditions, and then nobody really follows up on it, and then ten years later, there's a complaint that they haven't followed, well, we haven't followed for ten years, so. So I'm in favor of having this come back to, put a little more thought into and get the public's information.
Yes.
Or input.
I agree.
Personally. Anybody else strongly agree or against that?
Good idea.
All for it.
Okay, Ian, you have another project.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate that. I had no idea that was. Okay, yes, sir.
We have applications with this landscaping, so I think maybe with staff's looking probably for some direction to get building permits approved and get these first two applications in, and kind of approved, so if we're going to continue, I don't know why we want to delay these projects, I think that should be something the council should consider to give staff some sort of action.
My personal opinion is, I don't know if we can really enforce it, because we haven't My personal opinion is I don't know if we can really enforce it because we haven't enforced it with anybody else.
I would say, you know, I'm in favor that we move forward with these as, without the landscape ordinance going.
That's my opinion.
Call them to waive it because.
Waive it, and then we will look at our future.
And residents.
Because.
And we will review it.
Is waiving it the same thing as granting the variance, or is it just waiving it?
Okay. Wrong word choice. Sorry.
We're just not gonna look at it like we've done every other project.
Right.
With landscaping for the last forty years. Sorry, ma'am.
Well, you could allow us to release the building permits without a landscaping plan, and then once we have the public hearing in February, a planning commission, and we figure this out, then they would have to submit one that matches the new ordinance.
Yep.
If that would be your choice.
After the landscaping portion of the application until this is resolved at the council level, and then allow the building permit.
But the rest of it can go through.
That's kind of holding up from my perspective.
Mm-hmm.
When we reveal anything, it's kind of holding up these applications. And we have, to the point of frustrated developers taking it to the planning and zoning board, and obviously interested in it. They're not gonna be happy if we don't continue to delay the buildings.
It's been delayed because of it?
Yes.
Yes, on the building permit stuff, so.
I'm in favor of letting the building permits go through and just revisit the landscaping after, that's my opinion. Anybody else wrong against that, or?
I agree that.
Do we have to vote on that, or we just say maybe?
Would you like that official action, or is the direction good enough?
You know, it would make it.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
For landscaping. Thanks, Dan. Do a second?
Apply to these two and all other ones?
All to.
No, it would apply to these two right now to release their building permits, and we'll address the landscaping ordinance at planning commission in February.
Okay. Any other future people who need to?
We have to do this again.
Or go, will come back to us again?
If we don't have a.
Well, if.
If we don't have a plan.
If we don't have a plan.
But if we have a plan, then we're good.
Yeah, maybe now in February.
Yeah.
Yep.
Understood.
So for these two. So thanks, Dan, for that motion to have a second.
Yeah, I can second that.
Thanks, Paul. Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor? All right. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Brandon.
I don't want to hold them up.
On to old business, purchase agreement. So we have purchase agreement for Edge Apartments.
Yeah, so this is specifically for the land, for the Edge Apartments. It was in the council packet at the last meeting, but there was no motion to approve that one.
Well, we just reviewed it and moved on?
There was the development agreement.
Okay, gotcha.
There were two documents in there.
Gotcha. Okay. Any questions on that? Comments? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Make the motion to approve.
Thanks, Ryan. Do a second. I'll second that. Thanks, Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Personnel policy template.
That is updated as of the last comments that you guys made. The two sections of holidays and the time off was you decided that you wanted the administrator to be able to make an individual decision on that. So that has been left alone. So those were, those were the only comments we received the last time, so we're just looking to get this approved.
Okay. Are there any other comments or further comments, questions? Okay. Thanks for making those updates. Appreciate that. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Thanks, Mel. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Linda. When this was on here last time for the WSC CMS contracts, I guess I was a little confused. I thought we were gonna be getting different options from different companies, but not just the three options in there. So that's why I kicked it down the road. Plus, I have some other questions, so.
Well, they gave us three options.
Inside of there.
Company.
Yep.
We are still looking at other companies.
Okay.
We are still, Tim had an idea we talked about yesterday to see if we could reach out to Goodhue County. MinSpect is still working on getting an inspector that would be local down in this area and would work for multiple cities. So we are still looking at other options, but CMS needs an answer as to which way, which contract we want to keep using for now. There is a sixty day, we can get out of this contract with CMS with a sixty day notice.
Okay. So if we chose one, we're just paid by the, by the work versus the whole annual contract, whoever it might be. We have sixty days, then we could get out of it?
Any, any of these options, we can get out in sixty days.
Okay.
Tim and I have talked about it. We do prefer the first option. It really puts the burden on CMS.
Okay. And I've got one comment after a conversation with our attorney is that, and I would a hundred percent agree with this, I think the council might be interested, is that the language in there, I don't know the exact, there's, attorney suggests that we change the indemnity language. Right now, it doesn't indemnify us. If CMS makes a mistake, we're on the hook for that mistake as well. So I don't know the exact terminology you used, but is that about right?
Yeah, they're asking for mutual indemnity. We're not performing any services, so I'm not sure why the city would need to indemnify them.
Right. And if they make a mistake, we shouldn't be on the hook for their mistake, just like they shouldn't be on the hook for our mistake. Okay.
Would you send me language in where to replace that in the contract, and then I can get this all set up with them? Okay.
Thanks, Mel. Appreciate that. Anybody else have questions, or need to see the concern there when it's probably, it doesn't make sense for us to take on liability that it's not ours?
Yeah. So in terms of going out and finding other, other companies, is their service fee, is it higher? Has it increased? Is that why we're?
No, CMS is changing how they're doing business, so you have to pick one of these options. What we're looking at was our, and we're still looking at it, was our service from CMS. It was taking a long time to get building permits back. The, the quality hadn't been there, and the timeliness hadn't been there. So we were looking at, we had, Tim and I had actually talked to MinSpect before, but they didn't have an inspector down in this area. They're out of Waconia. So we just talked to them about the different options.
Okay, so this isn't, is it not so much?
Price.
Their prices have increased dramatically. It's more of, you know, maybe we should see if there's other services available since we're not.
Correct, correct.
Quite happy with what we've received so far?
Correct.
Okay.
And we hadn't really, you know, gone out for bid or looked at other options for building inspectors in, since I've been here.
Twenty years.
CMS has been here.
And they're local. I mean, it was local, and the guy was local. It's all good.
So, you know, we've always, they've been local, and we've always used them. So now with this change, we thought, well, now is our opportunity to go and see if there is something different, something better.
Okay.
And maybe with their software that they have, this iWorks, things will be more streamlined. Things just weren't as streamlined as what we would like. You know, when, when somebody has to come pick up a permit, there is, you know, there wasn't a way to electronically submit and doing that. So we're just trying to get more streamlined, more, more modern, more techie. But that's the way, we're gonna keep looking. Because now we don't feel as tied to a local company as we did before.
Understood.
Okay. Any other questions, concerns? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve option one with the mutual indemnity language removed on the advice of our attorney. Yeah, I'll entertain that motion.
I'll make the motion.
Thanks, Mel. Do I have a second?
Yeah, I can second.
Okay. Thanks, Paul. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks for everybody's work on that. Appreciate it. On to, Tim is still on leave, enjoying his time, I'm sure. Anything, Brandon? No? Okay, thank you. And then we go on to personnel promotion of Corey Carsonson at the Parks and Streets lead. That memo was in there from Mr. Lang. Any questions on that? Okay. Entertained a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Thanks, Dan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. That concludes for tonight, unless there's any questions on the fire department correspondence. We will meet again on February fourteenth for your lovely Valentine's evening meeting.
The public hearing will be published in next week's paper for the public hearing on the sirens.
Okay.
The fourteenth.
That gave me a phone.
So bring your significant other and have a great time at the public hearing for Valentine's Day. With that, I want to, and then we've tentatively set March ninth at eight AM for our work session. Unless something blows up on that, we'll let everybody know, but we're good there. And just so to remind council, we start negotiations next Monday morning at ten thirty. Mel and I will be meeting with MP for the police union's contract. So we will have an update at the meeting on the fourteenth. Entertained a motion for adjournment?
Make the motion.
Thanks, Ryan. Do I have a second?
Second that.
Thanks, Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.